Council March tenth meeting. At this time, Rod Panicky has agreed to do the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, as we come before thee tonight, we're grateful for our many blessings, grateful we can meet in such favorable circumstances, be able to meet with leaders of this great city, grateful for the country that we live in, and for those who've given their lives over the years to protect us and keep us free. It's the best country in the world, and we're grateful for that. Blessed is this night as we discuss matters at hand, we can do so in a pleasing manner and be able to resolve whatever differences may come up and be able to leave happily and in good joy in the same faith and same name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rod. At this time, we'll have our commission reports. Do we have any committees?
I'd love that you all looked at me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll start with one of them. Planning and, no, Design Review Committee, we met. We finally got our paperwork back from the lawyer for the city, who has drafted together the ordinance that we've been waiting on for several months. And it's a somewhat lengthy document, so Weezer Committee are still actually reviewing it. And we'll have that, I think, go before next month. It will come before the council next month. But basically, it's just the actual purpose of what our committee is and what we will actually do for the city and what the members of it will do in an official capacity on reviewing any design plans or so forth that come to the city for building in the future. So this is the committee that we started over two years ago.
Been that long?
Yeah. Yeah, we've been working on it for a while. And it's a lengthy document, so we're very grateful for the lawyer to get through that. For Weezer Economic Development Committee, we again got together as well as we usually do. We are excited now that the snow is melting again for our sign to finally be talked about with ITD so that we can get our third sign in. It's already been paid for. The check has been cut. It's being manufactured. It's almost done. And so we just need ITT to say, that's it, that's where it goes. And we continue to work with the city as well. Main Street has been working hard to get those pods, and so they are in the process of approaching the businesses to get funding to do the planting of the flowers within it. And so that is happening with that organization. Then I have an update from the, I'm not gonna get their name right, because I didn't write it down, but it's the Weezer River Animal Shelter. And Rescue. I also made it to their meeting. That organization is doing just incredible things. And the biggest thing is that as they continue to work and raise the funds necessary to, hopefully someday, one day, we hope soon, someday, open an animal shelter and rescue for the community, which has been their goal. They have four individuals that are gonna go to Vegas to attend a special conference that is all about developing and designing a humane society and the ways to run it. And so they're very excited for those members to come back from that meeting, which I think is next month or so. I don't know. I forget when I had the meeting. It's been a long month. They are also in the process of updating their bylaws, and they have a number of different events happening to raise additional funds. And so including, I don't know if anyone knows this, I think it's fantastic, but they have almost $300,000 that they have been able to raise to put towards the building of a property and the purchase of a property someday, hopefully soon. But they are working very hard and props to them as they continue to do that, as well as the TNR program that they support with the traffic monitoring. Two, three. Which one am I missing?
Library.
Library, also, it's not mine, but I will. Library is always busy. And I think they had meetings 28 days out of the 30 days that weren't in the month, but they still met that many times. This last week, they also had an auction, maybe it was...
Friday.
Friday. Friday, they had an auction on birdhouses, and they raised...
$5,500.
$5,500, thank you. Didn't even know that. I was gonna be an auctioneer, and then I had a show instead. No, I couldn't be there. But they're doing wonderful things in the library as well. They have tech classes that they are offering. One day a week, it is actually tech help, so people can bring in their devices or ask questions. And then on the Thursday of each week, it's an actual class. And so a number of people are able to show up. I think last week, they had 12 people in attendance, learning things about their computer. And so each week, they continue to do great stuff for our community, and we're very grateful for them. I'm sure there's another one that I'm also forgetting, but I'm gonna be quiet for right now.
Okay. Thank you, Sterling. Do we have any committee reports? We do, Mr. Chairman.
The zoning committee met regarding our portable storage unit, storage containers ordinance. And we don't have any recommendation for a change to that ordinance at this time.
Thank you. And thank you to your committee for spending the time to review that. Natasha, is there any other committee reports at this time?
I don't believe so, sir.
So are we ready for our department reports?
Yep. City of Weezer Department reports for February 2025. We have 51 full-time employees for part-time. What happened?
I don't know. Are you mirrored, or are you...? Oh, there we go.
There we go.
I don't know what happened.
You lost.
It was there for a minute.
Is it on your guys' screen?
It's on, it was on, not now.
Yeah, it just doesn't have that.
Guess we're just gonna have to listen.
Well, no, it was just there.
There we go.
When you... Click on the presentation.
Okay, then you guys are just gonna get to see the next slide as well. If you can both see, you can see that? Okay. So we have 51 employees and full-time employees and four part-time. The Weezer Police Department had 31 arrests, 27 were misdemeanor, and four were felony. Juvenile arrests were two, with both of them being misdemeanor. Citations were 49, with 19 of them being misdemeanor and 30 infractions. I did not get the total calls for service, but they had 38 case reports for felonies, 29 misdemeanors, two accident, and three incident. City of Weezer Animal Control had 15 dog complaints, 10 impounded, five were returned to owners. There was one cat complaint, one was impounded. The TNR program had one cat this month. They had one livestock and issued one citation. The Weezer City Ordinance Complaints, there was one junk and debris, one abandoned vehicle, two parking, and Cory did two bin inspections. The Wastewater Department February Flow for 2024 was 29,200,000. February Flow for 2025 was 33,490,000, with February's average flow being 1,200. The Wastewater Department pulled all three mixers for annual maintenance. No biosolids were hauled in February due to the dump truck motor being rebuilt. And they replaced nine bearings on the belt press and installed new air handles on the belt press as well. The Water Department, water production for February 2024 was 12,660,000. February 2025 was 11,195,000. The Water Department continued their annual water plant maintenance. They installed replacement backwash valve pump, sent three operators to Flagler certification class, and did snow removal around the plant. The Electric Department's power consumption for January of 2024 was 5,907,562 kilowatts. January of 2025 was 5,843,186 kilowatts. The Electric Department performed annual hot stick and grounding cable testing, continued with clearing limbs away from high voltage power lines, fixed a couple of bad connections to weatherheads on houses, and they were also called out to a pole fire on East Washington, where the top tie broke and made connection with the ground wire on the pole. The Street Department plowed all the streets with each snowstorm, cleared all city sidewalks, including the pond, put down sand and mag when needed, cold patched various potholes, sent two of the crew to Flagler's class, took surplus items to Musick... Music? Auction yard, and uncovered a storm pipe on hill crest with the help from the wastewater. The Recreation Department had a successful women's volleyball league, I believe with five teams. We ended up canceling men's basketball. The Recreation Department will no longer be offering men's basketball. Coed volleyball has seven teams and is ongoing. Youth soccer registration has closed, and they are currently taking registration for youth baseball and volleyball camp. The Building Department had six building permits this month, five single-family dwellings, one dwelling alteration in addition. Dave did 23 inspections and nine consults. Mayor and City Council, that concludes your department reports for February 2025.
Had their minutes from the February meeting to review in their packet? Any discussion on the minutes from February? Or corrections?
I move to approve the minutes of our February 10th, 2025 meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And this is the next one?
I don't know.
All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the bills have been reviewed?
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee has met, and I move to approve the bills as reviewed by the Finance Committee and present them to the Treasurer to have Warren Strawn for payment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Von Breddworth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. So we have no unfinished business at this time. We'll move on to new business. We have a proposal from the Weezer Memorial Hospital, request to use the city park for the upcoming health fair.
And... Councilmen and councilmembers, I need to ask for permission to be recused from this first item as one of my businesses is involved in the ultimate decision.
So do we need a motion?
Yep.
Move to refuse Councilman Blackwell from this item.
Okay. We have a motion to excuse Councilman Blackwell from this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time then, we will look at the Weezer Memorial Hospital request to use the city park for the health fair. And that is in our packet.
I'm happy to either.
Okay, come on up.
Awesome. Just make sure you state your name and your address. My name and address? Yep. So my name is Midora Albertson. My physical address is 11495 Hill Road, Payette. Something else? Yep. Okay. So my name is Midora. I am the Director of Primary Care and Mental and Behavioral Health Operations for Weezer Memorial Clinic. I am also the lead person for our strategic team, the Community Team. The Community Team, the last two years, has facilitated and ran our health fair that we have utilized the park for. And this year, we are asking to also utilize that park, but in more specifics, to be able to put items on the grass. In the past few years, we've been happy to put like our bounce house and some things like that on the pavement due to not having permission to be able to utilize the grass area. This year is Weezer Memorial Hospital's 75th anniversary. They've been here for 75 years, and we are trying to make our health fair in a celebration of that for our community. We also have asked to be able to bring on a very large inflatable colon that would go on the grass, that St. Luke's is going to let us borrow, if you will allow us to put it on the grass. This colon, which consists of the large and small intestine, will be a blow-up facility that people will be able to walk through, and our physicians will be giving tours through our colon on the grass, along with our, what, what... We're advocating for healthcare. So, along with our very funny, but yet still very important colon, we would like to be able to put our bounce house on the grass, just because it's easier for the kids, what's actually safer for the kids for it to be on the grass, in conjunction with all of our vendors and other community partners that will just have simple tables, just like we have done in the past few years. Do you have any questions? You all will be in the colon. You'll all have a food colon.
Is there gonna be a photo booth at the end?
I, we can make that happen. We can make that happen.
I just want a fiber stick before I go in.
Right now, we've got our physicians, Dr. Leidy, who does all of our colonoscopies, that will be holding those tours through our colon. So, any questions? Thank you.
Well, that'd be a new experience for me. I don't know about anybody else.
You asked.
Yes.
You get what you asked for.
There you go. So this application that I've got here says something about blocking off Court Street between Third and Fourth?
Yes, sir.
On the 14th?
May 14th.
Okay, and then on the dates and times, it says May 13th, Florida 6, and May 14th, 3:30 to 7:30?
So that 13th is... So the day before the 13th is when we have, for our 75th celebration, part of that is handing out shaved ice to the community there. So I don't know that you'll be on the grass, but utilizing the electricity possibly. So that's why he was...
I think for that, all they need is to reserve the park through their department.
That's right.
It doesn't require City Council.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't need the street to be blocked off on the 13th as well as the...
No, sir.
14th, okay.
Just trying to get people out to the park where we have our gymnasium that the hospitals put on there, out there, and utilize outdoor activities. Let's just, let me shave ice.
All natural.
All natural. Like colonoscopies.
Unfortunately, my 10 years is up, and I think...
I will never be invited back.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Of course.
Is there any further questions?
Mayor and City Council, just a little history. In the past, we have not allowed the bounce house on the grass due to the fact that the prolonged wait can sometimes damage the grass. But I did speak with Ron McDaniel from the Parks Department and Mike Campbell, and we believe that if it's at a limited time, and we know enough in ahead of time, we could, you know, not put as much water to the grass, not make it as mushy or vulnerable to damage. So I think with there being a timeframe on it and knowing in advance, I think moving forward, that is something we could start doing in the park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't see any problem with this at all. I'd move to, so are we, approving the street right-of-way and traffic control devices?
You would just be making a motion to approve the Memorial Hospital's use of city property?
I move to approve the Weezer Memorial Hospital's request for the use of city property. I thought one of their application. One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow the Weezer Memorial Hospital to use the city park for their health fair.
Hold those in favor.
What's that?
Just all those in favor.
So all those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're gonna open up a public hearing for the Negrete rezone request. We're gonna ask that everybody limit themselves to two minutes for their testimonies. And this time, we would like to ask for anybody who's in favor of the...
Nope, just open it up to presentation.
Oh, okay, we'll open it up to presentation first.
Hello, my name is Maria Negrete, and I live on 1105 Dillon Drive on Weezer, Idaho. I lived there for 30 years, and I lived in Idaho for almost 50 years. My husband and I purchased a five-acre land on A Blatlot, A, East 12th Street. It's by the Chicken Hill. And so what we're trying to do is give my son a land, oh, a piece of land, so he can build his home there, so we wanna go subdivision on that property to just do the one house and my house. Thank you.
So just a couple of questions for you, ma'am. Okay, so this is like on Chicken Hill, or is it on the way to Chicken Hill?
It is, it's like a private road that you go, where you go into the Chicken Hill, East 12th, and it's 12th.
Okay, above the canal or below?
Above. Above.
Okay, and what the topography of the land, is it, because it's zoned A1 in the county, right?
Yes.
Which is prime ag, is it actually tillable? Is it farmable? Do you have water rights?
We have water rights, but it is, because it's kind of a hill, so it would be hard to do any farming or do any going there.
Just because it's too steep, is that... Okay, what's it being used for today?
Nothing, there's nothing there.
So is there grass, or it being grazed, or is it just kind of open space? Okay, do you remember what, how long did you say you lived there?
In my...
In your location?
30 years, but I lived in Idaho for 40 years.
Okay, but at that location, 30 years?
Yes.
Has it ever been farmed in the last 30 years?
And where I live right now?
She doesn't live on the property.
Oh, sorry.
I don't live on the property yet.
I'm sorry. So that property, how long have you owned it?
I, for the last year and a half.
Okay, and it hasn't been farmed in that timeframe?
No.
So you've been in the area for 30 years, you don't have any time that it's been farmed?
No, never, I don't think it's never been farmed.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. So at this time, I believe we're ready for our public hearing. Would like to hear, again, we want to hold it to a two-minute limit. We want to start out with those who are in favor of this rezone. Is there any?
In favor?
Okay. Go ahead.
She's testimony, I mean, she's not gonna testify.
Oh, you're not gonna speak?
No.
So nobody wants to speak in favor of the rezone request? Do we have anybody who's against this rezone request at this time? If not, do we have anybody who's neutral at this time?
Bill Taylor, I live at 1334 East 12th, just on the same property she's owned. I'm not, I am for her building the house. This hill is the only thing that's been on it for the last, well, it's been 30 years, with just some cattle farming at one time, just saved Russian weeds. The only usable for this property is building a residence house, just like we did on our property above. And the neighbor right below us built a brand-new house not too long ago, Germans. The only issue I, concern I have with rezoning from ag would be if they subdivide the property and then multiple, multiple users using that property, but I don't believe that's their plan. They just wanna put like a secondary house on that property, but it'd just be adding one more person driving up and down the road. And it is a private drive from Lofer Lane on East 12th all the way down around the corner. There's like 10 lots serviced off that private road. And this is the road that drives right by the water reservoir. And also, just so you know, there's one LID water connection allowed for city water for that. Current partial now, if it got divided, there wouldn't be additional one being...
So would that, would that in itself probably be incentive to not subdivide it further?
I don't know. They'd probably have to drill a well for the secondary house if they did split it, and I don't know if finding a well up there can be problematic.
So it would at least be inconvenient to subdivide it any further?
Probably for them, possibly. There's lots up there that don't have city water available that people are trying to build on. But I am all for them, build a house, and they actually, I think they got permission to build the one house, they're just looking for a second one.
Can you clarify for me real quick, as a city person?
I can.
When one, when you say one city water LIT?
That's when they formed the Local Improvement District up there, 30 years ago. All the homeowners, property owners got together and purchased, to put in the water system up there, the booster pump that pumps the water up the hill, and the additional pipeline other than the reservoir and the main line going up to it. And at that time, they all, certain number of them, purchased connection fees to the water line. And this particular lot had one connection purchased for it that never got developed. So we honor those fees.
So there is a connection.
There is a city water.
But only for one home, and they would have to share that fee?
Why, if it's, I don't think we share lots.
Okay.
So if they split the lot, it would just be one water service for the one lot. If it was one big lot and a main house and a mother-in-law house type situation, that's allowed, that happens up there. There are several of them up there, they're that way.
Okay. Thank you, that's clarification I needed to understand your jargon.
Anything else?
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so do we have any further neutral testimony? If not at this time, at this point, we will close the public hearing?
No, she has the opportunity to come up and rebut anything that was questioned.
Okay, like you mentioned, we are aware that we can only have one line for the water. We are already thinking about with a second home. My son is thinking about getting like water tank, something, I don't know. He already, he's not here. He's a, he works for the prison, and he's a SWAT member, and they're doing some training in Monte Grine, he's up there. But, because he's a trainer now, and so he already has plans for, because he knows that he will not be able to get city water.
Okay, so you guys are just aware?
Yeah, we're just, we're aware of that.
That's the biggest concern, that you're aware of?
Yeah, we're not worried about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number three, which is the rezone request. So although the current, and just to clarify, this is in the county, is that not correct?
It's on Chicken Hill.
Yeah. So we're making a recommendation to the county planning and zoning?
Part of our impact area.
Right, part of the impact area. So although, although the property is zoned A1, in...
in practice, I, I think it's, you know, we haven't heard any testimony saying anything except that, that it is not used for ag at all, let alone prime ag, so, um, it seems to me that, that their request, um, for the, for the rezone is, is appropriate.
Yeah, I, the, the reports from our P and Z committee all show that they've, they've met the requirements according to Washington County Code, of course, Washington County has ultimate say, but I appreciate the work that went into it, and, and the labor work letting us know that they've tested the soil and done all the things that they need to do, so. I motion that we accept the rezone, the Negrete rezone as presented, with the stipulation that they, well, I guess we don't have stipulation, our recommendation is to the Washington County that they, uh, accept and move forward with the rezone.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is an action item.
Roll call?
Roll call, please, yes.
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Von Redhorse?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, at this time, we are gonna open up a public hearing for the Stern special use request, and this is also in our impact area. At this time, do we have a presentation?
So, Gail Stern, it's fifteen fifty-four Lofer Lane, Weiser, and, um, we have the Rustic Ranch Nursery, and we are just looking for permission to relocate to the new area, to the new spot over on Quail Lane. And, um, the last meeting we had, we had one person opposing it, and it was due to a drainage issue, but we actually, at our cost repaired that, and he is satisfied, he's not even here today, cause he's satisfied with the repairs that were done, so, um, feel like all the relationships that were amended, and we're just looking to move forward with it.
Any questions?
So it's zoned A1 now?
That is correct.
Okay, I know this is gonna sound stupid to you, but it's important because if it's A1, it's farm ground, so, to your knowledge, has, has it been used recently for, for farming?
No.
And, uh, are there water rights to it?
Yes.
So it could be irrigated, just as, as not, what, um, what about the topography of, of that property as a bubble, is it, is there anything that would stop it from being used as farm ground?
Um, I do believe that the fact that the, it was farm ground before the highway project went through, and when they brought the new Highway ninety-five, and, and this is just history that I've kind of collected, nothing that I knew facts a hundred percent, but he, we ended up being unusable for Joe Randall, who is the owner of it, and so he does farm the other side of it, of the property that is a piece of, this, he said, is just unusable for him, and so he was really excited about being able to bring in something that could beautify it.
Okay, and help me again, what's, what size of a piece of property is it?
Two point two seven acres.
Okay, and what about, if you irrigated it, drainage water for wastewater, is that available? Or is there anywhere for the wastewater to go if you irrigated that piece besides in the storage units?
So, um, the county has a culvert that they have installed there along the highway, and so, as far as where that-
So it's possible, okay. Alright.
You guys have done a very nice job cleaning that up, it looks very nice.
Thank you, we've been working really hard on moving forward with this.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, then. And again, we will start out, um, listening to anybody in favor of this rezone.
It, just, just for clarification, this is not a rezone, this is asking for just a special use on the property?
Special use.
Good evening, I'm Candace Elder, I live at one five eight nine Gentry Lane, and I just wanted to come as a board member of Main Street, um, I haven't presented to this group before, but, uh, we're, um, working with Rustic Ranch, and so we're pretty excited that they've found a space, um, for our flower pot program, they're gonna help, um, with, volunteer their time to help educate us on how to plant the flowers, which flowers will be best to go on the pots and things like that, so, what, we've been working with them a little bit already, and that'll continue, and it's really nice to have that local relationship with somebody that we can call if we run into any issues this year, so, I just wanted to come and support what they're doing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of the special use request?
Rod Panicky, I live at twelve seventeen County Road Seventy, forgot where that from here, so I'm in favor of it, they've done a nice job on cleaning it up, and one of the concerns that the property, the joint property owner had, which they didn't explain very well, was that it was higher than the storages that are over there, but they went in and they buried a pipeline to drain all that area across, or over to the culvert, it takes it out of way, and across the highway, so I just wanna make sure you understood that that's, you know, it's a good project, and they've been over backwards to try to meet all the requirements to make it feasible, and not hurt harm any local property owners or, or industries of any kind, so, just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we have anybody else that'd like to speak in favor? Okay, is there anybody that'd like to speak against this request, special use request? Is anybody neutral, like to speak neutral? If not, at this time, we will-
I just wanted to comment on the tailwater for that, if they used it for farmland, that tailwater would actually have to mix into the stormwater catch from the road, so I don't know if you could actually use it as a tailwater for irrigation, I don't know how that works specifically, but I do know that that culvert is for stormwater.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, if there's no other comments, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move to item five, which would need to vote on the Stern special use impact area request.
Mr. Chairman, you know, again, all, despite the fact it's, it's zoned A1, uh, it, I don't think it's been used for agricultural purposes for, since, since I've lived here, and that's been quite a while, uh, and as a matter of fact, you know, it's, number one, questionable that you could irrigate it with wastewater, with wastewater, number two, uh, it's just not feasible to farm a two point two acre parcel of ground, you can't even turn your tractor around, let alone, let alone farm it, so, so those characteristics of the property make, make their, uh, uh, request for special use permit applicable.
Okay, we have any other comments?
I believe that this organization is here for good, like, is working hard to help our community, and has proved that over and over, no matter where they are, that they're trying to do what they can, so, I think it's a great purpose and a great use of that space. So I motion that we accept and move forward with Stern's special use request.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the special use request, and this also is an action item.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, we are just recommending to the county.
Correct.
And it's special use, not a rezone.
Yes.
We ready? Okay, um, Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Von Redhorse?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, at this time, we're gonna open up a public hearing for Panicky rezone request from A1 to A2, and this is an impact area request, it's brought to us because it's in our impact area. Do we have a presentation at this time?
Should've sat on the front row.
You're getting your exercise.
So I have a, about a fifty, excuse me, Rod Panicky, twelve seventeen County Road Seventy, and a couple of miles north of town, I have about fifty-five acres, and there's a, there's a spot on it that's perfect to, somebody to be able to put a home on it, and it hasn't been farmed for that particular part, have you got a map of, you, you have a map of that? Okay, so what's highlighted here in red is, is the part that I'm talking about, if you can see it okay? Ready for you to go ahead?
Is this, is this the map we're looking at?
Oh, yeah, uh-huh, that's it, so what's in red is, is a spot that, that, it's about one point seven five acres, and it's zoned A1A, and I would like to have it zoned A2 just for that one point seven five acres, not the rest of the farm, I don't have any intentions of subdividing anything, but, so we could put a home on it at some point if we, I don't know if we wanted to, and, uh, right now, it's got a forty by eighty machine shed on it, and it's where I parked my, I bought this property in two thousand and six, and that piece has never farmed, I, every farmstead in the valley has a spot that you park your equipment on, or equipment storage or something, and that's what that property was used for ever since I bought it, so I've not, never irrigated it, um, but it is zoned A1A, part of it's a hillside, if you look to the west, that looks like a brush area, that's a sagebrush hillside, I don't know how clear that is on your picture, but, so, and a lot of the ground, it's, this particular acreage has gravel on it, cause I spread it around so you could get around it, and get into your equipment, it was muddy, so, um, it's a prime spot to put a home, quite frankly, most of the farm, but, that's what my intention would be to be able to do that, and that's why I'm asking for that zone change to be able to do that, so. Questions?
So, uh, Mr. Panicky, so do you, uh, uh, own the property that, that surrounds that as well?
I own the property that is to the south, and to the east, and to the west, my daughter, she owns a couple of acres right to, directly west of that.
Okay, so as, as we're looking up on that screen, the, the green part there, this-
That's mine.
That, so that's the part, that, so that's kind of just that square with the, with the parcel that we're talking about here, and the other parcel, it's just that, that square piece of property that you own, is that correct?
Yeah, it actually goes, it actually runs down, clear down to Monroe Creek.
Okay.
The property does.
And there is-
If you go, somebody's running, if you, your little mouse or arrow, just come on straight down, I call it down, I don't know which way you can call it.
You can just show them on the map, but my mouse isn't up there.
So the property that I own actually comes, clear down to here, comes up around like the, see the black outline? That's, that's the property that's in question, this is, and that other piece was my daughter's property. It's about fifty-five acres altogether.
And there's no other, no other place, or the, the rest of it is all A1?
All is A1, it's all A1, other than what I'm trying to define.
Other than, yeah.
What I like, I mean, you say one too right now, and so, that, that particular piece, I guess at one time was part of a larger piece, larger ranch or farm at some point, I don't know, it wasn't when I bought it, but it used to be at one time, so there's no, you're allowed four original splits if, if it's an original parcel, but it's not an original parcel, so, for that reason, I can't use that particular rule to be able to put a home up there at any time.
Okay, so there's no place on that property that you can put a home right now?
No.
That the, having the shed there is okay?
Yeah, it's just a, it's just an equipment, where I store my equipment, you know, it's crazy, and I'm probably talking too much, if I am, you can tell me, sit down and be quiet, and I'll, I'll do it, but-
I don't think she started her timer, so you're okay.
The presenter doesn't have a timer.
So you take like tires on a, you know, one of my tractors is a Johnr seventy-eight hundred, and the tires alone on that thing were worth twelve thousand dollars, and they sit out in the sun, and it doesn't take very long until they become weather checked, cracked, and so it costs a lot of money to replace those, so that's why I put that machine shed up there, was for that kind of thing, to put my equipment in, that has those kind of tires and stuff on it, to make them last longer, and it comes into the farm, A1, it comes into the, you can do that on A1A, you just can't put a house into it, so, and I got a little eight by forty, one of those containers, that's where I keep the tools and stuff in, I don't have a shop up there other than that, cause the machine shed just where it's putting it, so, so anyway, that's kind of, and that part, like I said, hasn't been irrigated since I owned it anyway, so, I never farmed it, so.
Okay, any other questions at this time? Now, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we'd like to open the floor for anybody in favor of this, um, of actually recommending to the county that they go ahead and allow them to rezone this from A1 to A2. Nobody in favor? Anybody against this rezone request? Okay, nobody against, is anybody neutral, like to testify neutral? Okay, if not, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item number seven, which is the Panicky rezone request, action item to our council.
Okay, so, again, I think it's a reasonable request, uh, that, um, number one is one point seven acres out of a fifty-five acre, um, uh, piece of property, it's, uh, you know, I think it's reasonable to assume that, at least at some point, that, that if you own that farm, you'd want to have a, have a home there, um, so, and I, you know, from what, what testimony we got, there hasn't been used for farming, and, and if you spread gravel on it, probably won't be, so, a home appears to me to be a, uh, an acceptable use on that piece. Agreed?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion.
We'll, we'll hear it in a second.
Soon as I get to that-
I'm on a roll today, sure.
Go ahead, you're up.
Counsel, I recommend that we, uh, accept the Panick rezone request from A1 to A2 in the impact area, my recommendation, also county, I guess.
Okay, was that a second, wasn't it? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this is an action item, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Von Redhorse?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, at this time, we would like to open up a public hearing for rate fee schedule change for our water tap, the base fee for the water tap in the city of Weiser. Mike?
You want me?
Or, Bill, are you gonna speak on that?
I can speak on that. Bill Panicky, City of Weiser Water Department Superintendent, uh, the purpose of this rate free, uh, can't even say it, uh, fee increase is, we have some, uh, out here, we were talking about doing an RV park, and the size of the meter required is not within our particular size, we can only sell right now, currently, our- We can only sell right now, currently our cap fees are from a three-quarter up to three inch. This particular meter, there doesn't need to be a six inch, so we're wanting to create a base rate and a cap fee for meters up to eight inch, so if there's any future growth, we'll have that in our prevail.
And just for clarification, it's not a rate increase, it is just scheduling the fee for those additional meter sizes?
Okay.
So identify that size.
So for the sizes listed here that we already have, there's no change in those?
No change in those, just adding to the... For a four inch on up to an eight inch.
Okay.
Man, I was really thinking about adding eight inches. I'm glad that I can do that now.
If you want, pay for it, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Long way of going up there? If not, thank you. And we will open up public comment. Anybody in favor of allowing us to add this fee for six inch and up, six inch to eight inch water tap? Four?
Four inch to eight inch.
Four to eight. Four inch to eight inch. Anybody against? Anybody neutral? If not, at this time, we will close the public hearing. We'll move on to item number nine, Resolution Number 700, Water Tap Base Rate Fee Schedule. It's an action item. Call for the vote called?
We don't have a motion. We don't have a motion.
Yeah, you guys need to... If there's any discussion.
We don't discuss.
I tried to jump...
Sir, Mr. Acting Mayor, man.
I tried to jump the gun. Okay, let's start over.
Mike, do you have an opinion on this?
Resolution 700 for the water tap. Any comments?
I think we need it, so I think it's great.
Okay.
Who uses, like, what type of a business or personal use would be a six inch? I don't know. I'm just questioning. I'm not sure that's going to make a big...
Who needs that kind of water?
Currently, currently, our largest meters are three inch. The hospital has a three inch meter. The school, Park School has a...
Okay.
Not Park School, it's the jail has the other three inch meter currently. Be some large business like a Fry Foods or this RV park. Part of why this RV park needs such a large meter, where they're wanting to build is down in the Flood Plain area, so all the fire protection that they need down in that hole, we don't want to own that, and we don't want to be responsible for it, so everything that they will have for the internal of that building down inside it. But eventually, there could be something that might move in here that might need a large amount of water.
Thank you.
No problem. Might add the formula to get those numbers was, is the same all the way through. So the same formula from three-quarter to one to one and a half, they're all the same steps.
Is that based... It's not cheaper the more water you get.
No, the tap fee part, they all match. It just is the continuing formula. They'll put that together.
Okay.
Thank you. Costco.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, we then gain a motion.
Okay, well, I think... Yeah, oh, please, please, let's break it up.
I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 700, Water Tap Base Rate Fee Schedule, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. At this time, we have a vote called?
Councilmember Von Brethorst?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open up a public hearing for the animal shelter to be added as a permitted use to industrial zoning. Do we have a presentation?
I'll just go ahead and present this one. So Weezer City Ordinance 1272 would be an ordinance of the city of Weezer, Washington County, Idaho, amending Title 10, Zoning Regulations, Weezer City Code, Chapter 17D, Industrial District, Section 10-17-1. Use is permitted, providing that the animal shelter be permitted, a permitted use in the D Industrial District, and providing that the ordinance be effective upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law. In our city code, in there, an animal shelter is allowed nowhere within the city limits. So what this ordinance would be doing is adding animal shelter as a permitted use in the industrial zone. So the committee went over this and presented to Planning and Zoning, the only change that Planning... So Planning and Zoning was in favor of it, in favor recommendation. The only thing that they wanted changed, and for this reason, I don't think we can adopt this ordinance tonight, because we need to make any corrections if we want to. Instead of in C, Animal Shelter, so long as there is not another animal shelter within five mile radius, no animal shelter shall be permitted within a five mile radius of another animal shelter. A facility operated by governmental agency, humane society, or other nonprofit organization for the purpose of sheltering, caring for, and finding homes for lost, stray, abandoned, and surrendered animals, an animal shelter may provide veterinary care, spaying and neutering services, and adoption programs, but does not include private kennels, pet stores, or animal breeding facilities. They did want a little bit of rewording to take out governmental agencies so it didn't conflict with our pound, because we, as a governmental agency, do run the pound. So with those changes, they were in favor of it, so...
Planning and zoning is in favor of that? Okay.
Can we vote tonight, or can we have our public hearing comment on this amended, on this amendment from P and Z?
You would want to just go ahead with the public hearing and hear from the public on testimony, and then close the public hearing, and then as a council, you would decide if you wanted to approve the ordinance as amended, and then we would have it at our next hearing, our next meeting, with the ordinance completely written up like it was going to be written. Yeah.
So the public hearing part of the animal shelter permit rezone, is there anybody here who'd like to testify in favor of?
My name is John Egger, I live 729 Madison Road. I am in favor of this adjustment to the ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, any other testimony in favor? If not, do we have any testimony against? Any testimony neutral? If not, we will close the public hearing and move on to number 11. And Natasha said Planning and Zoning has kind of amended the wording, and we have that on page three here. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, okay, so just a point of clarification here. So this would be a permitted use. So does that mean you, anywhere in the D zone, one of these, all you got to do is want to, there's no special use permit?
Nope. It's being added to the industrial zone as a permitted use.
So anywhere in the industrial zone, someone could have an animal shelter?
Yes, so kind of on a first come, first served, so the first one to go in, another one cannot be within five mile radius of that shelter.
Which would pretty much eliminate every place as our zoning stands today?
Yes.
You know, I... We've been working on this for years, as have the group of people who are likely to be our first requesters. And as far as I'm concerned, they have worked tirelessly and in good faith to try to, number one, do this right, number two, do it to where everybody agrees that it's, you know, a good thing. And we have, as a city council, we have kind of shied away from, you know, having any area in the city that, you know, that an animal shelter can be with the, you know, original thinking. I can say that because I was one of those with that opinion. But, you know, something I... We need something. They've made several attempts in the county to find a piece of property that they can use for their facility. And for whatever reason, have been unsuccessful in finding a place that was acceptable to the county. But somewhere in our area, we need to have a place to take care of these animals. I think that under varying conditions, this, we have a group that is, has shown that we can trust them to do it. Now, this amendment to our zoning laws doesn't guarantee that anybody in particular is going to be the people who get to have it, but pretty much the first people get to have it. And administratively, I understand we can come up with a procedure that will allow us to determine who the first requesters are. So, you know, I think at long last, that this is a good solution.
I do. I think it doesn't bind us so much that in the event that Weezer suddenly explodes, as far as population-wise, that the opportunity is there to revisit it if a second shelter were to open or a second humane society. But for now, I think this will serve our community well. And so just to clarify, it is that we are striking the words "government agency" from the definition as presented?
Yes, and the Planning and zoning also wondered about, instead of just a facility, is defining it and saying a animal shelter operated by a humane society, and so on and so forth.
By a human society?
So instead of saying a facility operated by the humane society or other nonprofit organization, say the animal shelter operated by humane society.
Okay, defining that instead of a generic facility, we're saying.
Defining that it is an animal shelter.
Okay.
Okay, and so is the term humane society, is that something we can say for sure an applicant would is? Is it?
That would be somebody who could...
Or other nonprofit organizations listed there.
So, okay, I misunderstood. I thought we were striking the nonprofit organization.
No, we'd be striking the government agency.
Okay, so, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Forget I said that then.
Okay.
Done.
Then, Counsel, I motion that we approve Ordinance 1272 amended with the wording submitted by Planning and Zoning, and that we officially review it or put it before us next month.
Second then.
Motion and a second. Again, this is an action item.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Von Brethorst?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, move on to item number 12, which is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a CWE agreement for engineering at the airport.
So just what this is, is anytime you have an FAA grant that is used at the airports, the grant states that you have to have an independent fee estimate to oversee what the engineers are predicting the cost to be, so you have to have another engineering firm confirm that they're not overcharging. So this is for Century West Engineering Firm to do their independent fee study against J U B's cost. The cost is $4,500. We are reimbursed for 95% of that through the grant. The grant covers the cost of this, but the $225 of that.
And so the hard cut of it, the 200 and whatever, is that comes out of the airport's budget?
Yes.
Is that correct?
And we're budgeted for it.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion?
No, I think Jim mentioned that this is the next major project that they're working on at the airport, and that it's something that they've been planning on and have budgeted for, and it's good to see we're starting on that process already. Let's go.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that. So we are approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the CWE agreement for engineering at the airport.
My second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, and this is an action item.
Councilmember Hoag?
Yes.
Von Brethorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number 13. So every time Mike, not every time, but when he's looking to buy this wastewater camera, he finds one and it's priced within our budget, he has to come back to us for the money or for approval, and then the camera's gone. So what we'd like to do here is give him authorization up to the full budgeted amount so that when he finds a camera next time that fits the bill, that he can go ahead and purchase it. Is that correct?
Yeah, so they would come across them in auction or used, and they don't last very long. So by the time I get the quote to you guys, it's gone, and we've had this happen twice now. So I'd like to get authorized to use the whole amount and just purchase it, and we would make sure that we go, you know, check it out before we just buy something.
And what is the full budgeted amount?
So the full budgeted amount that we have in the equipment line is $130,000.
Because we're doing a truck with it, right?
That was the thing, is when we first looked at just the camera, to purchase just the camera between 70 and 80,000, but then to put it in a vehicle and have it mounted and everything, would put us significantly more depending on the truck and everything we have done. We have found several used ones that are already mounted in a van or trailer. We found a few in a trailer and/or mounted in a truck, whatever. So if we had the full $130,000, we could buy a used one that's already mounted in a vehicle, either by auction or used, which the way we do that, we don't have to bid used or auction items. We can just purchase them outright for any loan.
Okay, the ones that you found that got sold out from underneath us, what was the cost of those, do you remember?
One was $119, and another was $127 and some change. The extra money would have to be to go get some of them or to go inspect them too. That's why we've asked for the full $130, because I don't know where they'll fit, but it is something we'd have to send somebody to look at them and bring it back, depending where it's at. Trying to stay on the side of the Rockies.
Okay, so it's something that we're going to end up spending that whole amount, likely?
Likely, yes. I would do my best not to, to find us the, you know, the best price we can, but I just... Right now, it's looking like the $130 is... I'd like to be able to go up to that.
Okay, and so is this below the threshold where we have to get three proposals and... Okay, and so is this below the threshold where we have to get three proposals and...
Anything used or by auction, you don't have to have three proposals for?
Okay, and so that we think the used units will work for us?
Yes.
They're going to last long enough, we're not going to, three years ago, you know.
Well, the good thing about it is every piece of these in small pieces is serviceable, so like cameras are serviceable, the truck unit is serviceable, the vehicle, you know, of course, serviceable. They have to have a water tank on them, there's a lot of stuff that has to be on there, but every piece in itself is a serviceable part that can be repaired or replaced at a later date if it would fail. The ones we've looked at are very low hours, the last van we looked at had like 45,000 miles on it, or 45,000 miles and about 2,000 hours of use on the cam, which their serviceable life is like 10,000 hours for the ones we've been looking at. So a lot of these are used by large companies, and they're on a lease, returned, or another city has sold, the one sold at auction through another city, they just updated their cam.
So how much, okay, so you said the camera, for instance, we're looking at one with two, okay, I can't remember the terms, 2,000, what, pictures taken, or?
No, 2,000 hours of operation, I think is what it was. And like I said, their service life's on the camera unit itself, the ones we've been looking at is 10,000 hours was kind of the range. They vary, so that's just kind of an average.
Okay, so 8,000 hours, I mean, how much do we use it?
If we used it every day for a year, that would be 2,080 hours in a year if we used it eight hours a day, every day for a year. So that'd be four and a half years. We won't use it that much.
How likely is that?
Very unlikely. This should last us, the bad part, you know, with used, I can tell you, it lasts forever, but something can always come up, even with a brand new one.
Okay, so it should just be expected to have some repairs.
Right, you're buying used, you're going to have some repairs sooner or later, whether it be the wheels on the truck, you changed the wheels on the drive unit. The cable is the very, one of the more expensive parts, the lowering arm and the cable, which those don't seem to go bad very often, I mean, in reading and questioning other companies. We use, I can't think of the name of the company, we try, we use a service that comes in and does it now, and we've been kind of using their recommendation on what to look at.
Okay, so, and what you're asking is for, is as far as who will approve, that's you? Or you're asking for us to give you discretion to purchase up to the $130,000?
Yes, I would like discretion to purchase, use up to the $130,000 and buy this if we find one that is suitable for our needs.
Okay, you have used equipment.
If I could get new for that, we would jump right on it, but a new one's about $300,000 to $700,000, we'd look at one with $700,000 or so.
Okay, all right. So probably used?
Probably.
So, and, okay, so what needs to be in our motion for a wastewater camera and vehicle, or how do we, do we need to say that?
Just to give Mike authorization to use up to the $130,000, which is budgeted for the wastewater camera.
Wastewater camera, okay.
Did you get that?
I hope so. Okay, I think. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the expenditure up to $130,000 as budget for the wastewater camera to be approved at the discretion of Mike Campbell.
And the company. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we call for the vote.
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Von Breckhorst?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. And thank you, Mike, for the work you put in on this, and hopefully this will help you get the job done. Okay, item number 14, approve.
I motion that we recuse Katie so that there's no conflict of interest.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to let Katie sit this one out. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
She's already at the door, I don't know if I've finished.
Okay, so we have a request to approve Zion's payments upon receipt, so we can avoid late fees waiting for us to approve at the following meeting.
So what's happening here is just how the due date falls. I think it's only going to happen maybe twice a year, where it's not quite going to make the council meeting, but it's going to be too late if we put it in second payables. So this is in the chance that this bill is due before we can get it in front of the council, that we give Margie authorization to go ahead and make that payment. The council will always see that payment and or billing, we just want to make sure we don't approve any late fees by not being able to get it in front of council on time.
Can I just ask the crazy question? What happens if in one of these moments, we have given this authority and we pay it, but we find out that there's fraudulent something on the account?
We could always go back and get with the bank and take care of it.
Someone takes a million dollars from the city, because I ain't got that in my account to cover it, I'm just letting you know, I'm a teacher in Idaho, so.
Okay, so, okay, how much is the payment?
I think it varies.
So this is a, what you're asking for is a continual approval to make this payment?
Yeah, only when it falls in that area where it wouldn't go before council until second payables.
So just in the case that there would be a late fee if we don't get it paid?
Yes.
For Zion only.
And so, so is this like a credit card, is it a?
Yes.
Okay.
It's our all in credit card.
Okay.
I don't know, finance committee, what is it?
I don't know, there's not, 10 billion other bills.
I'm just a little tease. Okay, well, Council, I motion that we approve Zion's payment upon receipt to avoid late fee in those crazy spare times that it could possibly happen.
Okay, we have a motion.
Authorized Margie's to pay.
Second. And a second? And we call for the vote.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Presentation of the Fly Fisherman's Club for the Mellon Family Foundation Pond Grant.
Do you want to come up and speak, or you want me to just?
I hadn't planned on it. I was looking for my cohorts, but they're behind my back, I just can't see them. I'm Mark Little, I'm a resident of Fruitland, and I'm a member of the Fly Fishers. And back in the spring, we applied for a grant to perform ongoing maintenance at the community pond. For history, we helped get this pond going, and it's been a success and a big hit for the community, and we're currently teaching fly tying classes, and then we'll teach people how to cast, and then eventually go out to a city pond and catch a fish. And the idea to have that pond continuously working, we needed to help out, we felt that getting some more money from the Mellon Foundation, who's been gracious to give us previous grants to give us $20,000 for the upkeep and maintenance of that, not for any capital projects, but for the ongoing maintenance of it. And since the city's already got a mechanism to do that, it just made good sense to turn the money over to the city to continue with that maintenance, because you can keep track of it, and it's individual budgets, and we can all report it, and hopefully when the time comes, we can get some more money.
So is there specific needs that aren't met right now, additional needs, or paying repairs?
So the pond has aerators, pond has pumps, and those fail, and you need to get those done. You have aquatic weeds and stuff that need to be taken care of, and so, and then you've got to have the money to buy the chemicals or something to take care of that, some tools to help keep the brush around, so that's the money that, you know, ongoing maintenance costs.
So the, so is the city's part in this just administering the payment of the expenses?
So the city's responsibility, they upkeep the pond, they do the work, and this helps support the money to buy materials to do that.
Okay.
So we would still carry on with our normal everyday maintenance of the pond, instead of it coming out of the city budget, it would come out of this $20,000 that's being donated to the city by the Fly Fisherman's Club.
Okay.
You're giving us free money.
Okay.
That's a good thing, you're giving us free money.
If we have a way to receive this and expend it in the budget, just know that going forward, when we put this back in the budget where we got the money this year, it will show up as a deficit until that money is gone. We do have it, and it's in the, it'd be a fund balance at that point, so, you know, we'll show it next year as a deficit, but the money's there.
Okay, so the money's already here, is that?
Yes, they have a check, yes, to us already.
Okay, so it'll be good this year and bad next year on the budget?
Yes, it'll look like we got a whole bunch of income, yes.
Okay.
Unless you spend all of it. Basketball, it won't bounce.
Okay.
Yes, and this has been done before, actually, I believe in...
Several.
Yeah, there's been, the Mellon Foundation has donated several times to this, and as the money gets...
In the aggregate, we're looking at $40,000 to $50,000 with this $20,000 check.
Wonderful, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and we definitely want to thank your Fly Fisherman's Club for everything they do to help maintain, and I know they had days where they go out and pick up garbage and...
That's tummy, and it'll be just before the free fish day.
We thank you guys.
You can thank us even more by signing up for our fly fishing classes.
Until I got busy doing other things about 30 years ago. I keep picking around the idea of getting back, but I think my wife tells me I'm a little bit too busy yet, but I'd like to get back as well.
When is the free fishing day?
I don't know, I think it's the first part of June.
It is, I think it's the first Saturday in June.
First Saturday in June.
And if you're there to come clean up the pond, it might be a free hot dog, I don't know.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do we need to?
Nope, it was just a presentation.
Okay, so we really have to have a motion to accept the motion.
No, we'll just take it.
If that was the case, I would have done it.
Okay, item number 16, we need, would be to approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment with Keller on the Ninth Street Water Line.
What this is, is we approve the $37,700 for the design of the line and bid, help to bid it. This amendment is to oversee construction and just make sure it goes in the ground, right? They come out and it's the construction part of it now.
So this was something that was, this is like not a surprise?
No, no.
Just another step in the process?
Usually you do a development agreement where they design, a design and development agreement, and then when that's done, it's out to bid right now, when the bids are open, they will follow up with the other, and it will help us through the construction side of this, where we have to jack and bore underneath the railroad tracks. An engineer being there is a requirement by Unit Pacific. So we have to have one there.
So this is just paying an engineer to sit there and watch them dig the hole and put the pipe in?
To verify it's being done correctly, and if there's any challenges, they will...
So we pay, okay.
It's in due grace.
It's almost twice as much for them to put it on paper, and then, okay, I'm in the wrong business.
But it probably, it kind of is a safety net for us to...
It is, it is.
Having a major problem with the railroad.
Okay.
You derail a train, it could be very expensive, so you want that? $17,250 is pretty cheap.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm all for it.
Was that a motion?
As a matter of fact, yes, I motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment to Keller on Ninth Street Water Line.
Second.
Good, a motion and a second, and this is an action item, call for the rule call.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Von Breckhorst?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, now, item number 18.
It's just on there in case we need it.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I mean, we need it.
I'm thinking we didn't need it, so I skipped it.
Okay, perfect.
So we're going to skip item 17, which is the executive section, and move on to...
Remember that we adjourned?
Just a second, I have to...
I still second it.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries.